Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for introduction purposes. My name is Todd Wilchon. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, we have fellow Commissioners Bill Avery and Deb Shore. On my right, Fellow Commissioner Roma Amundson. The Vice Chair, Commissioner Jennifer Brinkman, is on vacation today, so she will not be joining us. Joining us from the County Attorney's Office is Din Holloway. From the County Clerk's Office, we have the County Clerk, Dan Nolte, and Kelly Lundgren. Joining us this morning from the County Board Office, we have the Chief Administrative Officer, Carrie Egan, and the Chief Deputy Administrative Officer, Ann Ames. Now, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please direct the agenda?
A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda items are minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, May 29, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have Bill Avery, who made a motion, and Roma Amundson, who seconded the motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, last Tuesday. Any discussion or corrections? Please hold a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Abstain.
Motion carries three S, one abstention. Next, approval of the minutes of the Department Budget Meeting held on Tuesday, May 29, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the Department Budget Meeting held last Tuesday. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims. Approval of all claims processed through June 5, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number three, new business. Three A is a special designated license application from Ken's Liquor for wedding reception to be held at Hillcrest Event Center, 12,400 West Anton Road, Denton, Nebraska, on June 23, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the SDL application from Ken's Liquor. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. B is a resolution in matter of emergency closure of Bridge R-210.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Bridge R-10 is located on Martell Road, approximately 500 feet west of the intersection of Martell Road and South 120th Street. It has an ADT of 36 cars a day. In March, Commissioner Amundson and I toured this bridge because Commissioner Amundson had asked me the question, what does it mean when you say the bridge is scour critical and it's close to needing to be closed? And so, we did demonstrate in the field what "close" means to the county engineer's office. So, we did determine that after last week's rain, that the area underneath the bridge that was hollow has increased, thus meaning that there is a void behind the abutment for this bridge. So, it meets the federal highways criteria for a clear and present danger, and per that criteria, the bridge must be closed. In addition, we have noted for a while that the material behind this abutment was becoming increasingly soft, and we had concerns about it being supported. This bridge is interesting because it does show up in a recommendation for the Federal Historic Register in a 2008 Lancaster County report. The money that was used to build this bridge in 1962 was actually bequested to Lancaster County. We had a farmer from that area named Betzer that left his estate to county engineering to build bridges in the 60s. And so, this is one of two of those memorial bridges built by Engineer Dillon, and sadly, it is now closed.
Any questions? Commissioner Shore?
What are plans for either replacement or repair and a timeline, estimated costs?
You know, when I close bridges, I'm in an awkward situation, and when you ask me that question, I would much rather come to you with hydraulic sizing for the bridge and a recommendation earlier than closing. So, we know when we close it and we haven't started, that we're probably at least 18 to 24 months off, and that's if there's no major environmental concerns or historic concerns. In particular, with this bridge, I have contacted Lancaster County Lincoln historian, Ed Zimmer, to have a discussion about how we should proceed and what we should do. Typically, with this type of bridge, because of the expense of the plank timber back wall on it, I would say that we should replace it with a box culvert because we know that's less maintenance, but now we have the historic factor, so we may have to dig down and replace the planks, which we know is very tedious and very expensive.
Thank you for that information.
Commissioner Amundson?
That is what I was going to say, actually. I was going to explain the historical aspect of it. It is a marked bridge and everything, and so I think, you know, that adds another element to the whole discussion. And this is the one of two bridges, I think.
This is one of two bridges. I think what's interesting about this bridge is that it was built in 1962 for a total of about $6,700. And of course, we know even as we replace these with box culverts that were rarely under $100,000 or $150,000, even for box culverts, so.
So, I know we talked about this yesterday. It was a recommendation to place it on the National Park Service Registry of Historic Places, but do we know if it had been added to it?
So, I have to say, I am not an expert in the recommendations to the federal register, and they have a different, well, as I have a code for my bridges, they have a code for their recommendations, and I'm not familiar with their code, so I'm going to coordinate with the historian, Ed Zimmer, for that. I don't know the answer to that yet.
Any other questions for the engineer?
Move approval of the emergency closure of Bridge R-210. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close Bridge R-210. Any discussion? Hold a roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Three C is a resolution authorizing reduction of the posted speed limit on Saltillo Road and installation of the corresponding traffic control devices in Lancaster County.
Lancaster County Engineer Pam Dingman. We previously contracted with FHU for a safety study in this corridor. We did an addendum to add a speed study for this corridor so that we could have accurate, up-to-date speed information for Saltillo, 148th, and South 68th Street. So, when the engineer studied this corridor, we determined that the 85 percentile speed is now 62 miles an hour, up from 56 just three or four years ago. So, we obviously have some behaviors in this corridor of increased speed. In addition to that, the engineer reviewed the federal highway standing for intersection location and accident history, and has made the recommendation to place the speed of this road at the 50th percentile, which would be 50 miles an hour. I would suggest that before we install the signs and implement the speed in this corridor, that we plan on doing a number of press releases and coordination with the public. You know, the goal of the county engineer's office, and I don't know if Sheriff Wagner is here, and the sheriff's office, is not to cite people and find them for speeding, but to ensure that the residents of Lancaster County arrive alive. And so, as we continue to look at this corridor, we're recommending that the area shown in purple in the map have the speed reduced to 50. Now, in engineering, sadly, I wish I could make things less complex, and that doesn't always happen. So, as you look at the map, you can see the areas in green shown on the map, which is the half-mile point between Rockabye and Saltillo to the north is in the city jurisdiction, and from roughly the railroad tracks to South 14th Street is also in the city's jurisdiction. In the city's jurisdiction, the speed limit is 45 miles an hour. When I look at the pink, the speed limit in the county's jurisdiction is 55. So, we're going to have to do some additional sign recommendations that we'll come back to you with in order to make this whole corridor kind of contiguous with the speed. Because what happens here, as people leave the city on South 27th Street, we have 45, 55, and then we'll have 50. So, we're going to come back and recommend speeds that make sense for the entire corridor. That will mean speed limit changes on 27th Street, on 40th Street, on 54th Street, 56th, 68th, and 70th. So, and again, because we have to make these speeds make sense to the drivers as they transition from one speed zone to the next.
Commissioner Shore?
My original thought was this is a perfect time to make these changes because school is out and we can develop some new driving patterns before we add back in the hundreds of students and staff that travel to Norris every day. Do you think, knowing school starts in mid-August, that we might be able to have this accomplished by that timeframe?
Oh, yeah, will be accomplished long before that timeframe, but I wanted to be really clear with the board that this is going to have to be a multi-step recommendation because of some of the complexities that exist in the area, not only with the intersections, but that a lot of people don't realize as we're driving down the street that you were in the, I mean, in the, Saltillo corridor is infamous for that. At 77, you're in Nebraska Department of Transportation's jurisdiction, you go into Lincoln's jurisdiction, then you go into Lancaster County's jurisdiction, and what we really want is for the driver to flow seamlessly from one jurisdiction to the other. And so, we just want to make sure that we've signed it appropriately and fairly for the driving public.
Commissioner Avery?
Pam, I believe you and I had a conversation about this, and the 50 mile speed limit is what is required by or recommended by the feds?
So, based on the federal highway regulations for speed limits, this is what the consultant, FHU, has recommended based on road conditions and driver behavior and the 85th percentile speed in the corridor. We do know that people are increasing their speed in this corridor now, based on the study.
Yeah, at 45. Does that get us in trouble with other agencies?
Well, you know, what's-
Have the authority.
I don't want to arbitrarily assign speed limits to roads because we really need to do it based on engineering facts and study, and the 50 mile an hour speed limit is what the consultant feels is justified, given the federal highway criteria and driver behavior in the corridor.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the engineer?
Move approval of the resolution. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the reduction in the posted speed limit on Saltillo Road. Any questions? Discussion? Hold a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Three D is a contract with TruGreen LP to provide the annual service of weed control and fertilization services to county corrections. The contract will be effective upon execution by all parties. The cost of county is not to exceed $4,842.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with TruGreen. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. E is a recommendation from the Purchasing Department to award and execute a contract to all makes office equipment of Lincoln and Compass and office interiors for office seating. The estimated combined total amount for the County, City, and Public Building Commission is $80,000.
Move approval. Oh, sorry.
We have a motion and we have a second. Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Waller?
Bob Waller, purchasing agent. I just wanted to clarify that the expenditures for the county should be $30,000. It should have been broken out for the agenda item.
And I guess what, is this just the annual contract, or is there a specific project that this is going?
This is the annual supply contract for office chairs, so we're estimating that the county will have about 60 or 70 chairs this next year.
Commissioner Avery?
Do we need to change the resolution to reflect 30,000 rather than 80?
I, this is just the bid recommendation, if the numbers correct or incorrect.
Correct, this is, we can change it on the execution part of it if you'd like to because we'll do it that way.
Okay. Commissioner Shore?
No.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Hearing no other discussion. Mr. Clerk, please hold a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. F is an agreement with Yost Excavating Inc. for Project 1805, Phase Two of the 2018 Culvert Maintenance Project. The anticipated completion date is October 26, 2018. The cost to county is $611,915.82.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, this is the second phase of our contractor culvert pipes for 2018. Sadly, we are now past June 1, and June 1, of course, is when we get into bat season, and so, many of these pipes will not be able to start construction until after July 31.
Okay, any discussion?
Move approval.
Oh, Commissioner Avery, I'm so much-
I didn't realize there was a bat season. I thought they were always with us.
So, what happens is when there are certain permits involved with our pipes, and really year-round, there is actually a moratorium on removing trees between June 1 and July 31, based on that it's pup season for bats. And so, we do have, based on study, we supposedly had the most amount of bats in Commissioner Shore's district, but based on actual-
A statistic she likes to use frequently.
But based on actual findings, Commissioner Wilchon has many more bats than Commissioner Shore.
Yes.
Well, I thought they were all in my district.
Okay, well, thanks for the update on bat population.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Yost Excavating for the 2018 Culvert Maintenance Project. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. G is a professional services contract with JEO Consulting to develop a continuity of operations plan and a hazard vulnerability assessment for various Lancaster County buildings. Anticipated completion date is March 3, 2019. The cost to county is $22,215.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, as you may or may not be aware, our main campus located out just a little north of Westo is in the floodplain, and the buildings themselves are not in the floodplain, but the buildings are surrounded by floodplain. And based on some of our dealings with a number of federal agencies in the floodplain, if the levee were to fail, the buildings would be underwater. And so, based on that, we did a little bit of research and decided that we should, JEO does evacuation planning, decided we should have an evacuation plan for the assets in those buildings, and then later, when looking, because these buildings also don't have tornado shelters, we went ahead and added the shops too so that we could have an assessment of what our needs are in the event of an extreme emergency.
Okay, any questions for the county engineer?
You mentioned a tornado shelter. Where is the nearest shelter? Because I would assume that county extension has no shelter either.
There is no shelter on the engineering, the main engineering campus. So, we can go to bathrooms with the staff there, but again, these are not tornado-rated.
So, would, to Commissioner Shore's point, would the county extension office be included in this?
Right now, because I don't have jurisdiction over the county extensions office, I have not included the county extensions office in this particular, in this particular item. It doesn't mean that we couldn't go and look in an addendum to add it, but that the adding of that would be something that couldn't come from my budget.
And I appreciate that, and I think that's something that we probably would like to instruct either the Chief Administrative Officer or the Deputy Chief to follow up with Karen Wolbeck at the extension office to make sure that she's aware of this.
Because they would have the same concerns about evacuation and priority of assets and safe location.
Because this is news to me. I don't know. I think it's, unless anyone else knows, this is the first time I'm hearing of it.
They were built at the same time, I think, weren't they?
No, actually, the county extensions office is about 10 years older than Lancaster County Engineering's office, and so, we became aware of lack of a true tornado shelter when we started doing tornado drills about three years ago, and so, it's been a concern for our department and, of course, for the well-being of our employees, as well as extension and any of extension's visitors.
Well, it would make sense if there's any modifications to be done. It should be done at the same time.
Okay. Any other discussion? And I cannot remember if, do we have a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk?
Not yet.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the professional services contract with JEO Consulting. Please, any other discussion? Mr. Clerk, please hold a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Three H is an interlocal agreement with the Lower Flat South Natural Resources District and the City of Lincoln to provide the project number four for the Salt Creek Watershed Master Plan.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, during the flooding of 2015, you may or may not be aware, but the bottom of Salt Creek actually dropped two to three feet in many locations, and now what we have across the county is what we refer to as head cut. So, the rest of the creeks are trying to drop to match the elevation of Salt Creek. The City of Lincoln, through their stormwater bond process, and the NRD are coordinating with us for this issue at this location. We've been working on it for about 18 months. You may recall an interlocal agreement to partner on the engineering of it. So, this is the interlocal agreement for the construction of a drop structure and bridge stabilization on West Pioneer's Boulevard in the Wilderness Park area. I've circled it on this map. It is Bridge O-37, and as noted in your agenda item, it's project number four on the South Salt Creek Watershed Master Plan. And so, you know, these master plans that we do have with stormwater management are really important, not just to the development of the city, but also to the county for us to work together on to preserve all of our infrastructure.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement with the Lower Flat South NRD and the City of Lincoln. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. I as a work financial plan between Lancaster County and the United States Department of Agricultural, Animal, and Plant Health Inspection Service Wildlife Services for management of damage or damage threats caused by wild or feral mammals. The management period is July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019. The cost to county is not to exceed $7,500.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the work financial plan with the USDA, AFIS WS. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. J is the reappointment of Stan Breeder and Brad Roth to the Lancaster County Indigent Defense Advisory Committee for terms commencing May 20, 2018, and lasting three years.
Here we have a motion to-
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Stan Breeder and Brad Roth to the Lancaster County Indigent Defense Advisory Committee. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number four, consent items. Four A is a First Amendment to County Contract C-17-160 with JEO Consulting to add additional environmental permitting services related to the replacement of Bridge N-19. The cost to county for the additional services is $6,000. B is a contract with Maxwell Products, Inc. to provide the annual service of poly-patch applicator rental on mastic paved patch. The contract will be effective upon execution by all parties. The cost to county is not to exceed $33,100. C are amendments to the following contract. C-17-33 with Murphy Tractor and Equipment for skid steer loader rental. The amendment increases the cost and per-hour charge and renews the contract from May 22, 2018, through May 21, 2019. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed $5,500. C-18-659 is with High Plains Enterprises, Inc. for project number 17-9. Concrete box culvert F-225, G-111, and G-144. The amendment revises the final completion date on concrete box culvert F-225 to June 8, 2018. D are right-of-way contracts with the following. Marlin and Mary Johnson, North 176th Street and Bluff Road, in the amount of $2,667. Larry Agna and Rex Behrens, South 90th Street and Hickman Road, in the amount of $1,185. Larry Agna and Rex Behrens, South 96th Street and Hickman Road, in the total amount of E is utility permit number 1664, allowing Alfred Benish &amp; Company to take soil samples at various locations adjacent to Saltillo Road and Rockabye Road. There is no cost to the county. And F is received and placed on file of the county clerk's report for May 2018.
Move approval- Move approval of the consent items.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please hold a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number five, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on the agenda, may do so at this time.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda regarding county business? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please continue with the announcement?
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold Department Budget hearings on Tuesday, June 5, 2018, at 9:30 a.m., immediately following the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting in the Bill Oxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on Thursday, June 7, 2018, at 8:30 a.m., due to the attendance of Nebraska Association of County Officials Workshop in Carney, Nebraska. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, June 12, 2018, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold Department Budget hearings on Tuesday, June 12, 2018, at 9:30 a.m., immediately following the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting in the Bill Oxford Studio of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
I move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please hold a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
That concludes the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. Have a good week.